And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for remotely attended tonight's city council meeting. The camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending in person. The platform we are using has raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand. Kathy, would you please bow the wall?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Riche.
Here.
Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Quorum present.
We have one presentation tonight. It will be from City Comptroller Angela Gray regarding 2022 sources of revenue.
Mayor, good evening, Counselor Angela. I just wanted to talk about what we're doing now. Excuse me, the one area we haven't covered in detail in our budget workshops yet is the sources of revenue. And I want to give Counsel a chance to ask questions about sources of revenue. Have Angela brief on some of the changes that have been proposed in our sources of revenue. Well, before I do that, going hand in hand with revenue, I just wanted to read briefly from a letter we received from the Office of State Comptroller, Dear Mayor Skelly, based on a review of the City of Augsburg Fiscal Year End 2021 Constitutional Tax Limit Form. We know your city is exhausted 80.6% of its limit. Without exclusions, the city would be at 91.6% of its tax limit. State finance law requires the comptroller to withhold certain state aid payments from local government if taxes levied are in excess of the limit. Based on our experience, the city is currently considered to be in the high risk zone. The current proximity of your city to its tax limit warrants close attention by all involved in the budget process. We've included an analysis of the recent tax limit trends for your city. While the percentage of the tax limit exhausted decreased by 7% from 2020 to 21, this is primarily the result of a 10.5% decrease in the tax levy, which may not be sustainable in future years. Because the percentage of the tax limit exhausted has been affected by fluctuations in the exclusions over the past four years, the city will need to closely monitor its tax levy and exclusions. A significant decline in exclusions or increase in the tax levy could have a detrimental effect on the city's proximity to its constitutional tax limit. Counselors, this is the fourth year that we receive this letter. As we, if we drop below the 80% mark, we'll stop getting the letter. I would submit the letter is not really the important thing. The important thing is that we drop below being in the high risk zone of our constitutional tax limit. As I said in my budget presentation, the one form of revenue and the only form of revenue that city council ultimately controls is property tax. And we must keep a healthy amount of limit for us to do. I'd ask Angela to come up now on the second handout we've given you is the, some computations, how the constitutional tax limit will be impacted by the proposed 2022 budget.
Good evening. So before you was a worksheet titled, "The Constitutional Tax Limit Data for 2022." This is also included in your budget every single year, but I thought we'd walk through just quickly how the constitutional tax limit is calculated, what the different numbers mean. The limit that we have, no matter what the tax rate is, is a 2% of our five-year average of full valuation. So that in the green column is $5.6 million. So that is our, the limit as to how much we can levy on taxes. The tax levy that's proposed in the budget going down the green column is $4.5 million. That represents a 10, an additional 10% reduction over your 2020 tax rate. If you follow this through exclusions from the tax levy, this is something that the comptroller, the letter talks about having with exclusions, without exclusions. Our basic two categories of exclusions are debt. So when we have revenue-producing debt, such as water and sewer debt, we are allowed to exclude that from the calculation. And also capital equipment purchases. So that number is two-thirds of the way down. Our total capital equipment exclusions from this year's budget is around 202,000. When they talk about that number fluctuating, I think in review, there's been as high as 450. It just really depends what the expenditures are in the budget in that given year. Going up the page, the other debts, those are debts that are also excluded. One of the cautions in that letter was to monitor when these exclusions expire. This is not on the budget page in your budget book, but I've highlighted three items in yellow that are due to expire within the next two years, which represents one-third of those exclusions. I believe they total roughly $130,000. So I did point that out for you. Going to the bottom of the page, I've put the history of the constitutional tax limit in 2020 and 2021 in the gray box. And you can see the top number is with exclusions and the top number is without exclusions. The way the budget is prepared, we are anticipating a, having only used 70%, and I rounded up at 69.49% of our constitutional tax limit, based on this reduction of 10% again in the current year. And without exclusions, we are at 80.65, which is just breaking into the caution zone that the comptroller's office warns the municipalities about. The question always becomes, how much do we need to reduce taxes? Should we do the full 10? So I just did next to that green column some modeling to show you what your constitutional tax limit would be, should you only reduce the taxes 5%. So you can kind of see the swing of that. If we reduce the taxes only 5%, we would have an approximate with exclusion usage of 75% and without 86%. So again, still in that cautionary zone from the comptroller's office. In the very top of this worksheet, there's a black box with a quote in it that says, "Cities that have exhausted over 80% of their tax limit are in the caution zone, while those over 90% are in the danger zone." That's a quote from your New York State Comptroller's Office. So any questions on constitutional tax limit?
This is very good, very helpful to understand that.
Thank you. So I also have attached to that a very simple worksheet showing a tax rate analysis for your information, more so than anything, to show you if we were to reduce the tax rate in 2021. This is kind of the history, so I'll walk you through this top to bottom. In 2020, your tax rate was 19.86 per 1,000, which was a 5.66 tax levy. We reduced the, not we, the council reduced that to 17.87 in 2021, giving us a $5.1 million tax levy, which was a reduction of 543,000. This budget is prepared using a 5.89 tax rate, which is a 20% reduction from the 2020 number, which would give us a tax levy of $4,567,000 and change, which is a reduction of 450, I'm sorry, 556 from the year before. If you were to only do that 5% reduction that was modeled on the constitutional tax limit, the decrease in revenue on your real property tax line in your budget would be approximately 268,000. So that's really just an FYI to give you kind of an idea. As you look at the budget, where revenue would fall should any of those tax rate numbers change? So in your budget, changing gears, if there are no questions, looking at the revenue, that starts on page B-1. And I just want to go over some of your bigger ticket items. Going to, so I tend to go top, bottom, bottom to top, I'm sorry. But looking at our modified budget of 2021, the total budgeted revenue modified was $14,652,000. Now, council did pass budget resolutions throughout the year that did modify this budget. Those are all presented in the various minutes. In August, we did a budget modification that impacted this number. So when you look at any budget number in the budget, it is modified to include any budget resolution done throughout the year, which you have done three, just to give you a reminder of that. So going back to B1 from the top, we have our real property taxes. You can see that the 2022 proposed budget is $4,567,000. So it does reflect that reduction of $556,000 that we talked about. The next biggest line of revenue is our sales tax revenue. And I wanted to walk counsel through how we came about an estimate of 2.9 million. The city is due to preempt starting April 1st, 2022. So it is a best guess as to where our sales tax revenue would be. So the way that we went about this is from January to March, we will still be under the sharing agreement with St. Lawrence County. So we received 6.44% of all the tax, sales tax collected in the county that they're entitled to. On average, looking at the 2019, 2020, and 2021 average, that quarter has generated about $939,000 of revenue in the city.
939?
939, yes.
That's from January to?
To March.
To March, March 31st, April.
Correct, yes. So that, that would be our average. Then, back in June, we did a significant sales tax analysis to try to determine what the best, and I don't want to use the word guess lightly because it's certainly not a throw mud at a wall, see what it would state guess. It was based on factual data. In 2000 was the last year that the city preempted before jumping on the sales tax sharing agreement with the county. At that point in time, you were collecting $1.8 million as a preempted city previously. So that five-year average, looking back at that point in time, was $1.6 million of revenue. We then looked at the sharing.
2010, sorry.
Counselor.
You said 2012?
2000, 2000 was the last year you preempted. So then we looked at the sharing agreement numbers from 2016 to 2020. And that would be the last five years of data previous to this year. And steadily, each year, we've seen a 4% increase in sales tax from year to year to year in that timeframe. So as of right now, in 2020, this city collected $4.4 million of sales tax under your sharing agreement. So we were at 1.7 previously, and current day, 20 years later, we're at 4.4 million. So the question becomes, how do we budget with such an uncertainty as to what the future holds? So we went through and said, okay, let's estimate future collections. So we're able to do math and say, it's reasonable to think there will be X number of dollars of sales within the county. And then we said, okay, of the county sales, how much of that belongs to Augsburg City? Based on historical data, Augsburg was receiving approximately 10% to 12% of all county sales when you were preempted 20 years more prior. So if we say that the city has 11% of that pie and we don't have home rule legislation, we would assume we are going to get about $2.5 million just mathematically of sales tax into the city of Augsburg through preempting without home rule on the additional 1%. That number can go as high as 2.9 million if you assume that there's 13% is representative of sales in Augsburg across the whole county. So the biggest variable here is what are the taxable sales generated in the city of Augsburg? And that is a number that through many, many attempts to ascertain, we are unable to ascertain, just because one of the big reasons is we're not the taxing jurisdiction right now, so we don't have the authority to get that information. So you're kind of in that, you know, circle there. So what we did is we looked at 12 months of sales tax revenue that's coming into the city. So we've got that first quarter hanging out there at 939,000. We said, okay, over the last three years, the 12-month average is 4.2 million. We reduced that down to the 2.7 million, assuming that we would be approximately 10% to 11% of the total sales in the county. So that's the big, the big nugget that we don't know. And so we have to start somewhere. So I feel as though that was a conservative number. And then we prorated that for nine months of April through December, which gave us $2 million. So if we take that $2 million that we would expect in sales tax collection within the city limits, added to the 900,000 that we're expecting from the county for that first quarter, based, all based on historical data and some assumptions, we come up with a budget number of 2.9 million. So I know it's a lot of numbers and probably very hard to visualize, but are there any questions on that or concerns?
So we're losing about 1.5 million because of the county's decision not to continue the agreement. And that's what we're, that's what we're up against basically.
Correct. Correct. And it's a twofold thing, Counselor. If we were to stay on the agreement, year-to-date, we have collected approximately $4 million of sales tax revenue under the sharing agreement this year. So that part of that allocation becomes 6.44% of the 1% that we're chasing for the home rule legislation. If we had the home rule legislation sitting here today, I would encourage you to add about $2.5 million to your budget based upon that same formula we just went through. But without that extra 1% home rule legislation in the city, it would not be prudent to put any of that money in there until that legislation was passed.
That legislation is so key for us.
And what are we doing, what are we doing to date in regards to that legislation? Where are our chances, I guess?
We met with some of them in Walsic, I think, three weeks ago. And he is fully engaged in helping us craft the legislation to be prepared for the next legislative session. Senator's office is also engaged. They feel confident they can, you know, bring the legislation through again in the Senate as they did last year. It's just a matter of us working, working a lot differently and harder on the assembly side. We're gonna, right after the first of the year, we're gonna sit down with the staffs and review the legislation. We've got some draft language, working through the attorneys now, and come up with a strategy of how we get enough votes through the assembly to pass it, including talking to other, other members of the assembly.
It's so funny because the county's been so insistent that we get too much money. When we do the tax legislation, it turns out that, you know, they really benefit from ours. You know, we haven't been adapted to them. We haven't taken too much, we've taken, we've gotten too little. And yet, they still persist, wanting an agreement. I don't understand.
Really treated like second-class citizens in general by the county. It's the big city fear from the towns and villages.
Yeah, when we first went over.
Even though when we have 10,000 people and we're not, you know, it's not like we're New York City or Syracuse, I mean, yeah.
When we went over that first meeting, the end was there, and then 1.1 million, 1.1 million every year, 11 million, we're not, no real basis.
The, if the projections, you know, we're 10 months into the data now. If the, the numbers stay straight, the county's take of sales tax will be up almost $9 million in this, the same period last year. So the sales tax is doing what we all want it to do. It's, it's increasing, generating more money. So again, it defies logic why we want to blow up something that's worked for this long when everybody's making more money. It'd be one thing if sales tax was going down and people were trying to harness it more to pay the bills, but again, this year alone, it looks like the overall take to the county would be close to $9 million increase. And we've been $3 or $4 million every year the last couple of years. And significant jump again this year, almost doubles.
But we do have our own city attorney working on the home rule, right? I mean, we've got someone engaged.
And I'll tell you, the towns and villages are quite concerned in Augsburg. There's not any disagreement, you know, what will happen to that. Do you think this number's conservative enough?
Well, I hope. I mean, I know that's not really the answer you want, but I mean, I've done everything that I could possibly look at nine different ways to say.
It's really conservative, but I don't, I just, I don't think it is.
I think the reason it looks a little higher, Counsel, than you might think it would look is because we are getting that first quarter on the tax sharing agreement. That number would be probably what, 300,000, 400,000 less than that? If we, if we didn't have that first quarter that was going to be under the sharing.
Compared to this quarter of 2020?
Well, just saying, for factoring for next year, we're gonna get the first quarter under the sharing agreement. If we weren't doing that. Yeah, if we weren't getting that, that number would be down 300,000 or 400,000. You'd be looking at probably more like 2.5 million instead of 2.9.
And where are you getting that number? Where, where are you suggesting you're down from, from what, from this year?
Well, just in our.
From January, from January of 2020 to March of 2020, is that where?
No, no, what I'm saying is we're, it's, we're getting three months that we're not preempting next year.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got you.
Because since we're getting that additional money, that's why it's a lot higher. It would be, it would be lower.
So if we were preempting for all two months?
Yeah.
Sorry.
So if we don't get the home rule, we're gonna be down another 300, 400,000 next year.
That is correct. So I would say, and plus we'll have a year's worth of, not a year's, but nine months of collection data to go on when we do the 2023 budget. But yes, without that first quarter being under this sharing agreement, I would never have recommended 2.9 to Steve's comment. I would have dropped that 300,000 to 400,000 more. There's a little bit that happens when the state switch sales tax technically like this with your businesses that report, is they have to get used to a new reporting and a new tracking mechanism as well. So some of the, trying to be conservative is that learning curve that's going to be out in the private industry as people need to adjust how they report on sales tax and that whole education piece. The state does some of that education, but I don't know if I could say they do a lot of it.
So it's the businesses themselves when they're filling out their?
Yes.
SST form.
Yeah, so the ST 100, STA 10, whichever one they're filing right now, just they report sales tax in St. Lawrence County for anything related here, which is super easy. Now they're going to have to track their sales within the city limits versus the rest of the county. So that requires, from a private industry standpoint, a retooling of how they do their books and records. So you're asking the public to catch up to that reporting as quickly as the laws are changing. That's why that number needs to be conservative in that respect. And that is something that we will have to bird dog the entire year because if we go many months without hitting our target, we're gonna have to adjust the appropriations. There's no way not to.
And you know, have the states changed their form yet?
They wouldn't change it. Sales tax porters run weird, run a little bit off. They would change it December, January, February, March 1st. That form will change for private industry to report on.
And like a lot of the sales, I assume, are either, you know, Amazon and other online sales, your big box stores like Walmart, Lowe's. Do their, does their software use like a GPS?
Yes.
And they would know?
So the, the nice part about when you're dealing with the largest retailers out there, the Amazons and Walmarts, significant online presence, they are very good and have tons of CPAs, lawyers, on staff, that this is what they do. They track these tax law changes to make sure they stay compliant. So those really aren't the concern as much as it's the small mom and pops and getting them to adjust as well.
So it's like the guy in the Schwann's truck or something. He travels around the county and they're used to filling out the St. Lawrence County and then?
Correct.
Shoot, I got county for Augsburg.
Yeah. So there is.
There's an example, they'll probably be okay, actually. So there's, there's a, this information will be, so the code will get added to the, to the database and it'll all be tracked. We call it zip code, but it's micro more than zip code. It, it really is, it really is people with their own small businesses recognizing there's been a change to the form and changing the code number. But one of the big questions we talked about a bunch of times is like the Amazons and whoever. And it's interesting enough, again, those, those companies have the, once the code is added, it's based on the delivery, so it doesn't matter where it is. Once they put the zip code in, it will recognize the code and bring it. So the, the big ones, the large poles will be, will be taken care of, but it will be the, it'll be the tracking and we'll end up with an exhaustive list after the first quarter of everybody who reported paying sales tax to the city. And we'll end up going line for line, you know, looking to see yes, no, yes, no, does that look right, not right, are we missing somebody, et cetera? So there'll be some, there'll be, there'll be a couple of intense quarters of reviewing who's paying in with the state. I don't know, I was, I was a little, I was a little pleasantly surprised the state's system for this. And they refer to us as the customer in this regard, which was nice to hear. You know, and they said, this is, this is what we do on your behalf. We collect this on your behalf. This is our job to do this on behalf of you. So, so I feel like we have good communication in that part of the comptroller's office. And the notifications will start soon. We just crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is to make sure notifications were done, et cetera. So I think we're, I think we're ahead of it, about as far as we can get. It'll just be a matter of starting to, starting to work it through the system.
When you mentioned Walmart, currently the Walmart, like the Messina, Potsdam, and Augsburg, they currently report it together. So they're going to separate our individual Walmart out. I know that was the issue before, was that they reported together. They will have to report within this one here, will have to report within the city limits.
They're currently, I'm sorry. I think your number's, I think it's safe. I think, I think that getting half of that, one half cent, one and a half, three cents, I think it's gonna amount, it's gonna be size one. And then that last penny, when we do get it.
Counselor Powers, did you have a question?
So through tax and finance, we've been able to, we've been able to now, so we'll be able to go through last year through tax receipts, sales tax receipts? No, but going forward?
Going forward, that would be the, the plan is to ask for that data that's being reported within the city of.
Plan to ask for, can they provide it?
They can, yes.
They can.
They just can't now because when you fill that out, if you take, I'm just gonna use them as an example, Price Chopper, there's one in every community. They just have to put one number on the form. So the state, asking the state for that, they only have the one number. You'd almost have to go to the registered vendor and ask them for the granular data, which they're not gonna give you, and why would they?
So they agreed to do that?
We were successful in getting that previously one time, but the data was not great because it was, and then it was actually ended up being an oversight that we were provided that data, long story there, but we are going to make that request, yes.
Do we add it to the home rule legislation?
No, no, it, again, once we're an entity, then we have, we have a right to ask for it. The problem now is because we're just not a collector now, we don't have the right to ask for it. It's not, it's not foilable information.
So why can't the county get those numbers?
County can, the problem is, is they get it, it's aggregate of the county. So again.
Through the county.
Yeah, we could get the Walmart.
Box store and Potsdam.
We'd get Walmart, one big number and then try to, and we did that, as Angela specified, we got 2019's list from the, the state provided it. Later the comptroller's legal came back and said they shouldn't have, but we had 2019's. But it was a big list with a lot of big numbers. And we pulled some good, some good data from it, but the big box stores from, since the example was trying to estimate, you know, you just, I mean, just thirded it. Or, you know, which, which Walmart sells more, which Lowe's, et cetera, so, which Price Chopper.
Not to sound redundant, but to go, going forward, we have to have it before us. We can't go back and ask Pax and Finance to plug in 13669 and give us some receipts out of Walmart or Price Chopper.
No, we can't do that for historical data. No, we can't do that for historical data. And the other, the other problem there is the vendors sometimes don't have a 13669 zip code. So even relying on their sales tax address that they're registered under, you couldn't even sort it that way.
You see the problem with that?
Do I see the problem with that?
I mean, huh? Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, from even a reporting standard for the business, I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
No, so what will happen now is, so now similar to the 911 database, uh, which, which this pulls not exactly from the 911 database, but very similar. That's how a delivery truck knows if the data, if it's 13669, but if you're in the state limits and you're just out, it's the same zip code. The, the database shows the geographic area that you're in. It's pretty sophisticated. I don't think, I don't have a lot of worry on this end. The, I think the, the concern for us, excuse me, has been just making sure the system gets going. I, I feel like the state, um, state's there, this isn't the first time, but I will say there is a, appears a reason that everybody has these tax sharing agreements with the county. There, there is a reason. This is, this is a job. This is no doubt a job, especially for the first year or two, as it gets up and running, we get stabilized and make sure our vendors, I mean, this, this is, this is work. This is not as easy as, I mean, the, the agreement makes it real easy. They're reporting to the county, large area, do the math, send us the money. So there's, you know, there's, there's definitely work involved in ensuring this stays consistent.
There is, and the sales tax, I always say in, uh, has no logic, the laws out there for sales tax just sometimes defy any logic that we would come up with. So it's also the education to the public. It's your city businesses, but it's also businesses that come into the city to transact taxable purchases within the city. You know, so I might be a Potsdam business, for instance, coming into the city to do something taxable. I need to know, even though I'm from Potsdam, to change my sales tax recording. So it's not just the city businesses that need the education. It's anybody that's going to do business within the city limits.
So it's like independent contractors.
Exactly. Yep.
Your heating and plumbing guy from Watertown.
Yes, because they're the most
But they come into Watertown to do business. If they do that business in the city of Augsburg, they have to report that as business done in the city of Augsburg. That's the overhaul.
Would your vendors work the same way, like, like U S Foods or Cisco? As far as like, you don't pay the sales tax upfront as the business, you, you pay it after you charge it. So wouldn't they have that same number as far as going to the state of what was being sent here as far as the deliveries?
They, I mean, I think, let's walk through Cisco. Cisco sells everywhere in New York State.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't, it doesn't charge sales tax.
And it doesn't charge sales tax. So the state is literally getting, here's your gross sales for the month, their monthly reporter or grow, you know? So they have no idea where that gross sales number went. They're not required to report that by county if it's a non-taxable transaction. So sales tax is fun, but I do hope the number is conservative. It is a number that, as I want to just reiterate, will have to be absolutely monitored. Because if we're not hitting that in 2022, there will be some decisions that need to happen, probably somewhat hastily. Right? Um, that is our second largest revenue. We are showing a $764,000 decrease on that line built
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, where?
I'm still on sales tax, just summarizing that line. Um, so we are showing a $765,000 decrease on that line. It is a mixed bag. It's part sharing, it's part preemption and built into the formula is a million and a half revenue reduction. So, um, I would like to see the city beat that number.
Well, I, I guess my concern with the, with the number to follow up on Dan's point. You know, we, we, communities taking a hit with jobs. You know, I Yeah, that will, that will certainly affect that. Most certainly will.
You have two big hits in the city.
I mean, we're, you know, if, if we get home rule done by, by April 1st, at budget time.
That's good.
You know, we've got 10 months to preempt, right? Or no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't
We would be getting that home rule, hopefully that home rule legislation though, in that 10 months, which that would solve the problem.
What's the payroll there, Nadia? Where? O C F. 10, 20 million? What was the, what, full staff, full staff, it was a 20, 20, back in 2010. So that's really, that one time Augsburg had 500 employees, right? So the 268, really, it's more than that. So that is a huge loss of It's 200, you got C Joes, you got Oklahoma. Yeah, people's buying power. We're whacking away positions, excuse me, left and right. It's gonna add up. Yeah, you think the state would do something positive in terms of like passing a home rule, right? But legislation and sales tax for us.
That would be wonderful. So it's important that we assist in making that happen. I mean, it really is critical to this budget. On page two, B dash two, about halfway down, our next largest source of revenue is state revenue sharing of 1.7 million. That is the same as it has been the last couple of years. That's passed with the state budget. So that is a fixed number and that is our allocation of aid to municipalities. The last piece that I, well, it was going down a couple more lines. We have the consolidated highway aid of a half a million dollars. I've worked with Shane Brown on this number. That revenue is met with expenses within the budget. So that is a reimbursement type item. I would like to stop at the next line of two lines down, 583,002. This money represents $50,000 of the 2021 ARPA allocation and $533,000 of the 2022 ARPA allocation. So when that money was announced that the city would be receiving that money, we had a plan to go over the four years, send that back out into the community, possibly use it for some water sewer infrastructure. The 2022 portion was used to balance the budget. Without that money, we have a half a million dollar shortfall and I'm just rounding a half a million dollar shortfall in the budget. There is a lost revenue calculation that the federal government gives you that tells you about how much of that money you can keep into your coffers to cover lost revenue. And that is what our eligibility is. We will have to shore that number up when the 2021 revenue closes to make sure we can still keep the whole 533,000. But as of right now, I'm anticipating that we can, and that was the only way this budget balanced. Unless we increase sales tax, which I don't think is the right way to go, or look at some additional revenue sources. Property tax as well is something that we can control.
And the interfund revenues, is that strictly water and sewer?
That is correct. Um, the interfund revenue is about halfway down the page, line eight to eight oh one. Interfund revenues are $812,000. That is money that the Water and Sewer Fund is reimbursing the general fund for various expenses. So it's a lot of the administration and a lot of the contributing expenses to that is the administration and City Hall. Some of the non-falory cost in the garage department. So there's a bunch of different things that get added into that to determine what the allocation should be. So that brings our total revenue in the general fund to just shy of $13 million and it was a $1.7 million reduction over the year before. Any questions?
I noticed the airport security went up quite a bit. Aren't they low on flights? Have their flights decreased?
The contributing factor to that would be the overtime that's being billed to them for the coverage based on current year information that we had.
I get the bill to protect airport guard?
And, and the increase in salaries. Our, our, so the, the bridge and port pays for two full-time equivalents and then we give them an estimate what we think the overtime will run. So that, that's how their cost goes up. And, uh, no, Counselor Scamp, no, the answer is no, we're not doing less at the airport. One airline just added a, a flight. So our, our effort at the airport is, is largely the same.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
Forty percent increase, thirty seven.
We took the average police salary.
Yes, we took the average police salary using overtime data that we had available and built that number up. I believe the reason why you're seeing the 37% increase is because the 2021 budget was just the base bill without the overtime portion.
And on the school resource officer, that revenue is budgeted, so that would be revenue that comes in from the school district. If we're not going to have that this year.
You've got to modify that to zero.
Okay, that was the other thing that I had noted on here.
Yeah, when this was prepared, that announcement wasn't out. So when we do the final budget comes out, we will be reducing that line 96, 525 down to zero.
We're obviously not making any money on our earnings, on our revenue for looking to project 78% down interest in earnings.
And that again, counselor is sort of one of the numbers that's tied to the market. So it's one that we do our best to estimate, but as the interest rates go down, they're really very low right now on any savings type. We're at the mercy of the market on that.
What is the interest rate?
I would have to get back to you on that number. We do have money in what we call New York State, New York class funds, but I can provide that for you.
Paying a lot, a lot less interest with debt.
Yes, that is
How much debt do we still have with the county?
With the, with just
Are we still in arrears with the county? As far as, uh, how much?
I wouldn't say we're in arrears. We had, in the past, a resolution, council passed a resolution to pay that within 18 months and we are well within that time.
I think we paid 500 up top. Am I right?
Without looking, counselor, I'm not sure. I do know that the years that we owe, so we've kind of paid them by years are the 2003, four, five years. So we've paid most, we've paid all of the, the newest year first. So now we're just tackling those last three years. So I believe we owe three, four, five and 13.
Can you give me the interest rate and the amount that we owe the county?
There's no interest on it, but I'll give you the amount that we currently owe. Oh, I can provide that. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one proclamation tonight. And I'll read that. Whereas violence against women is a worldwide pandemic. It crosses every social and economic class, every religion, race and ethnic, ethnicity. Whereas at least one out of every three women worldwide have experienced violence during their lifetime. And whereas Zanna International supports projects that engage and empower the global community to end violence against women. And whereas Zanna says no to violence against women is a Zanna international campaign to raise awareness of and increased actions to end violence against women and girls around the world. And now therefore, I Jeffrey M. Skelly do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2021 through December 10th, 2021, as the Zanna says no to violence against women campaign and encourage all people to recognize and help end violence against women and girls. Okay, we, uh, we have three public hearings tonight. The first is regarding 2022 preliminary budget is going to be bill number 70 and I will open that public hearing up now. We will begin with a letter that will be read by the city, the city clerk.
To council and citizens, Augsburg is getting a grant of up to $550,000 from the New York State Financial Restructuring Board, F R B. It's said to be a reimbursement for staff accruals and incentives paid out to retiring firefighters, a good thing financially. But is it reason to celebrate as the mayor and city manager gleefully did on camera? Footage that won't play well if things go bad because of their reckless push to get rid of firefighters. The F R B in their 2019 report loosely stated that, quote, "The city could potentially operate with as few as 20 firefighters," end quote. After the report was received, the city signed a binding contract in 2019, which calls for a minimum of 24 firefighters, a number that provides for adequately staffed shifts, avoiding contractual hazard pay, which would cost close to $200,000 next year due to imposed shift shortages. During the award announcement last Friday, a F R B member said, quote, "Our report cited, even though we are not fire experts, all decisions need to be made locally, out of safety, out of service with the residents and the administration," end quote. So the board member was making it clear that they only make recommendations. The final decisions are up to the municipality based on what's safe and effective, which is exactly what was done in contract negotiations in 2019. The board member also stated during the award presentation, quote, "Departments, they can design the contract. Our reports and our resolution state it's got to be subject to the terms of that contract," end quote. So they clearly understand that contract terms can't just be ignored. Is the F R B even aware that the city has violated the firefighter's contract? Because the board member said, quote, "We felt 20 was, by analysis of peers, a comfortable minimum level for the first time, for the time being." So that's what they thought, that's what they brought the budget down to. We are not trying to incentivize going below that, end quote. From that statement, it appears the board also doesn't know there's been only 18 firefighters for over five months now, or that there's only 17 budgeted for 2022. And is the F R B aware that the city is spending a considerable amount of money on legal fees just to have their contract violating cuts upheld? Or is that something else they don't know? So here's a suggestion. For the $550,000 reimbursement award, hire three police officers as the chief requested and three firefighters to get to 20 for 2022. And then apply again for the safer grant in 2022 to fully fund four additional firefighters for 2023 through 2025. If the safer grant is awarded, the contract dispute could be settled. We'd have 24 firefighters for the price of 20 for three years. The firefighter's contract expires at the end of 2025. So contract negotiations, including on staffing levels, will take place just before the grant would expire. This suggestion gives the city manager what he's asked for, a solution and money to pay for police and fire. Just because he doesn't prioritize public safety doesn't mean he should dismiss ways to fund it. Ron Bouchard.
If anyone is attending remotely and would like to speak in this public hearing, please use the raise hand feature.
The first individual is registered as Mike, Michael Thule, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Thule. I live at 214 Hamilton Street. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Previously, the city clerk forward to you questions and comments I have about the proposed 2022 budget. In the interest of time, I will not speak to all these items now, but I asked counsel to address them during your discussions about the proposed budget. And I note that some of the discussion already has answered some of my questions. So thank you. Speaking about certain issues of importance to me, first, uh, thanks to Angela for the explanation of the development of the sales tax revenue budget in 2022. That was one of my questions. I, I think listening to all the presentation tonight, a view has to be taken over a two-year window and not a one-year window when making decisions on the 2022 budget. Due to the uncertainty of sales tax revenue projected in 2022, plus based on the presentation, the possibility of a $300,000, $400,000 lower sales tax revenue in 2023 without home rule. I think that's another reason to hold the line on, on any reduction in property taxes in 2022. Also, if I understand this right, there's a $530,000 federal money revenue budget to balance the current year budget. If that doesn't If that doesn't repeat, that's another five hundred thousand dollar gap in twenty-twenty-three that we're going to have to deal with. So I just don't know whether it makes sense to reduce sales, excuse me, property tax revenue at this time until we get through twenty-twenty-two. I appreciate the desire to reduce the, the percentage of property taxes in relation to the constitutional tax limit, but I think it can be done in a more incremental manner. I support the request of the police chief to restore three police officers to the twenty-twenty-two budget. As I stated in my letter to local news media, I think one of the messages city employees enacted or sending in the recent election is concern about the reductions in public safety since January one of twenty-twenty-one. So in, 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 in simple terms, I guess, if we keep the property tax revenue as is in twenty-twenty-two, lower the sales tax budget by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be even more conservative, at least three hundred thousand dollars in revenue to, to fund the three police officers' request. I believe the money's in the proposed twenty-two budget from the city controller's office. I suspicion to bring back in-house staffing at his office, a full-time city controller and up to three-person office staff. Still curious what the status of the business developer position is. And then, as Councilor Reese suggested in the past, our money's budgeted to hire a consultant to assist in identifying grant opportunities, and our aid in grant writing, is that in the budget? Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Matthew Irwin, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Irwin. Now, I'm the president of the Police Supervisor Union. Just like to say a few words regarding the proposed cuts to the police department budget. I would first like to commend the hard work that is being done by all of you during this difficult budget time. I understand this process is not an easy one, and contemplating further cuts is not an envious one. We understand that your job is to do what you feel is best for our city and its residents. What we are going to ask of you falls in line with this message. The proposed and past preliminary budget cuts are manpower even further from its cuts last year. The proposed cuts will leave us at eighteen officers compared to twenty-nine a few years ago. We ask you strongly consider, reconsider cutting us to that small of a number. We also remind you that you are making a decision as to the manpower for twenty-twenty-three as well, because it takes time to train all those new hires. Chief Kearns has decreased his budget request of twenty-four officers and asked for a bare minimum of twenty-one officers to our daily police functions. This is not a number that was reached lightly. It still means that officers cannot get time off, they request at times, and that we are minimum staff regularly. It is the most efficient number the department can operate at while still completing the work we have. We've often been told during the last few years to take emotion and personal opinions out and look at the numbers and facts before us to become, better come to a responsible decision, what is best for the city. Keeping this request in mind, we tried to remove all opinion, perception, and emotion from this discussion tonight, and would like to present some data from this year. Our current staff, staffing is eighteen swarm members, although we were at twenty-one for a little more than half a year, prior to Chief Wes Scott retiring and patrolman circles and patrolman buying, transferring to other departments. Let's split the difference for easy math and say we averaged nineteen and a half officers for this year. Keep in mind that does not factor in injuries or long-term absences by these members. We also have two civilian dispatchers. The only true measure of workload is complaints handled by the department. This number can then be divided by our staff. You have, giving you an average workload per officer. Not concrete, as each complaint handled may have a vast difference in time and energy allotted, but at least gives you a number so that you know what you're getting per officer for the taxpayers' money. Our complaints as of November seventeenth are ninety-three hundred complaints. That is four hundred and seventy-seven complaints per sworn officer. We also have to work dispatch for two vacancies that exist, taking officers off the road to handle complaints, which means the real number handled is higher, but there's no way to calculate exactly. We are often compared to Messina PD, who has twenty swarm members and pays almost double the overtime we budget. They have forced civilian dispatcher staff. Their complaints as of November seventeenth are seventy-two hundred. That's three hundred and sixty complaints per sworn officer. While we're comparing, they also make more money hourly and pay less in healthcare than us. At the, at a budget meeting, councilor Reese asked about the sheriff's office staffing and covering for, coverage for comparison. The sheriff's officer currently has thirty-two swarm members with at least six anticipated hires. Like Messina, they also do not have officers covering dispatch vacancies. Their complaints as of November seventeenth are eleven thousand one hundred, eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred, which were transport complaints. That is three hundred and forty-seven complaints per officer. Looking at this raw numbers, our officers handle one-third more workload than other agencies that you've asked us to compare ourselves to. This means three of our officers handled the calls that four do in other agencies, or as a whole, eighteen of our officers handle what, twenty-four do in other agencies. We're not asking for you to give us twenty-four officers to balance the load. We're only asking for you to give us twenty-one, and we will continue to do more with less. We understand you are cutting taxes and trying to be fiscally responsible. We appreciate that sentiment, but are asking for there to be a balance point where you save money for the city but still have an adequate police service. Twenty-one is a vast decrease from twenty-nine members in two thousand and eighteen. We understand that twenty-one is what the city can afford right now, not twenty-nine, and we are willing to do our part in these tough times to move forward. In order to assist you all in moving the city forward and fighting these ongoing issues in crime, we're riddled with, we need twenty-one officers. We hope we have shown you facts and numbers that you can ask, that you've asked for and consider when voting on the budget. Appreciate your time. Have good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
The next individual is registered as Jeff Legault, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mr. Legault, it appears you are self-muted. Would you like me to move on, Mayor, and we'll circle back?
Yes.
Okay. The next individual is registered as Penny Sharrow, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Good evening. I'd like to just register as a citizen. I agree wholeheartedly with Rob Bouchard's letter. I also agree with Matt Irwin, his little talk that he just gave now. That money that's been allotted to you through this grant is earmarked for something, and I know you're all busy and not me. Mr. Jolly won't walk out on my, my dissertation here, but, um, which would show respect or disrespect, whatever the case may be. That money's earmarked for something. It doesn't need to go for another truck or another this or another that. We could use three more policemen, and we could use a fireman staff. One of the reasons they're getting the overtime at the airports is because we don't have enough officers to provide the time at the airport without the overtime. I mean, a lot of these things are just common sense. So if you get that money granted to you, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars certainly would take care of a problem for a while, and it certainly would solve this contract issue and show a little bit more trust from your departments and the council and the people that represent them, and the citizens maybe would develop a little more trust in people. I, I mean, I just can't, I can't understand how you can be talking about laying people off and you're increasing salaries of people in that building right there, and we haven't got money, and you're laying safety off? I know I've been, I've been dubbed a drama queen by the mayor himself, so, I mean, I guess that concern and drama must be in the same boat when he's talking about it. But that money should be, shouldn't just be earmarked for something right off the bat. You should discuss it and figure out a proper way to use it. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. One moment, Mayor. I have to find her, so commute her. I do not see any other hands raised.
And that is regarding a local law to allow for changes to the Augsburg Municipal Code, section one seven seven, entitled sewer rates, as dictated by the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two budget, is going to be billed number seventy-one. And I will open that public hearing up now.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
The last is regarding a local law to allow for changes in the Augsburg Municipal Code, section two one five, section thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, entitled water rates, as dictated by the adoption of the twenty-twenty-one budget. It is going to be billed number seventy-two, and I will open that up to public hearing right now.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
And this brings us to public appearance. At this time, anyone attending remotely would like to address counsel. Please raise, use raise hand feature. You have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
And this brings correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda that the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant, number twenty, twenty-one, the amount of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. Library warrant, number twenty dash twenty-twenty-one, the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. And capital fund warrant, number twenty dash twenty-twenty-one, the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And community development warrant, number twenty dash twenty-one, and the amount of zero dollars. And community renewal fund warrant, number twenty dash twenty-one, the amount of zero dollars, as audited, be in the same hereby our orders paid. So please.
Second.
Jesse, would you call the vote, please?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Delaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scampoli?
Yes.
Approved.
This brings us up.
One, one quick note. Correspondence skipped over. There's no correspondence.
There's no correspondence, sir.
We can bring just items for council actions, and we do not have any items for council action tonight. This brings us to old business, and we will begin with Chief Skelly.
Counselor wanted to discuss an update on the American Rescue Plan Act spreadsheet, excuse me, you have in front of you. Let me back up for a second. So as we told you a while back, we put out a general advertisement solicitation, letting people know the funds were available. Were you interested? Is it something that you thought your business could benefit from, et cetera? We then went back after speaking with you on those responses with about a six or seven questionnaire, one-page form, just asking for information that we could start to boil down the applicants. So what we've done tonight is I've organized this, Angela and I, into a spreadsheet with some recommendations on kind of first-round stuff. Let me just walk through our philosophy or concept we've used. First lines you'll see are the businesses. The amount granted indicates money that they've received from some other entity or agency via federal or state funding. Amount of money requested and their status. So the first column is nonprofits entities. So you can see the entities listed there. Most of them received no funds. Two had received some money, and then what they requested and what our funding recommendation is. What I tried to look at here was what was based on the money that we set aside for this. The, what were, what were good micro grants that the city could issue to these businesses? So what you see there in the first again is the nonprofits. What they requested, so in the case of the four, nineteen thousand, we've recommended five. If you go down, you'll see our methodology there. We typically hit five or ten thousand dollar recommendations based on size of the organization, mission, people served, et cetera, or just straight up what they requested. For instance, the garden club requested four thousand. The next column, the columns you see in yellow, for instance, the Augsburg History Museum, the Zonta Club, those are yellow. Those are just entities. We've got to go back and get some more substantiating documentation. We just couldn't make a decision from what we had. Not that the applications were bad or anything. We just looked for tax return information, you know, basically showing losses from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, you know, et cetera. The next line down is small businesses. Again, you'll see what was recommended and what we have, what we're recommending for funding based on what was requested. Again, the yellow marks are just those businesses that we'll be going back to in the next couple of days, getting some more substantiated information and coming back to you. On the last page, I've left the Frederick Remington Art Museum and the, and the Catholic Diocese off to the side just for a moment, and I'll come back to that. And then the last column is people that indicated some initial interest, but we didn't get a formal application from them. We've made numerous attempts to go back to each of these entities to get the information, and we're going to do so again this week and next week. Busy time of year for everybody. I suspect some of the agencies may have received funding from somewhere else and, and may have decided not to, didn't have the time, et cetera, but we are going to go back. This wasn't intended to be a hard and fast deadline process. I wanted to get this first round out as quickly as we could. It's taken a few months, so a process, while it's moved as fast as we can, it's not exactly quick. So I didn't want to delay for the, the entities that have, that have gotten us the information, so. Uh, on the Remington Museum, we'll be addressing their funding request through the budget process, and we'll talk about that in the budget process. The Diocese, again, I've left that there. You can see they've received considerable other funding, and I wanted just to be able to talk with counsel about their, their philosophy on should we be using the small amount of funds we have when they've received close to one point three million already. So back to the first recommendate, or recommendation line, the nonprofits. Fifty-eight thousand is what we're recommending in total, and then an additional twenty thousand on the small businesses for a total asked tonight of seventy-eight thousand to be able to send out to the businesses impacted. Again, this won't be the last of it. We'll be back as we get the additional information with the businesses and nonprofits in yellow, and as we certainly scrub through the, the folks in red. Received a couple of applications. One is latest today that we'll be adding, so we're not, again, nobody's locked out of this process now. It's, it's staying fluid. Again, we made, I think, a lot of attempts to make this program known to businesses. Got a lot of response, but I don't want to leave anybody behind, so we'll keep talking about it. I think every time we mention this or we talk about it, somebody else sees it and contacts us, so. With that being said, I'll let you take a couple of minutes to digest what's there and subject to your questions.
When is that new law going to affect where all of our material has to be available to the public? That in effect now?
It is.
So is that, is this on the, like, we're getting this last minute here?
Yeah, we're just.
Supposed to be available to the public too, right?
It, it is, and, and, and we would have made it available had we had it done. We're just getting that done now.
With more discussion.
Of course. Of course. I, I mean, counsel can, can make a decision with, with what you see tonight. You can, you can ask questions. I mean, we'll, I'm just trying to get this to a point where, again, we're, I'm bringing, we're, we're bringing in the data as we get it up to the minute and we get it to the line. We had a couple of requests, I think Counselor Scampoli had one last, and somebody who just sent one in that we were able to get on here, so. I'm just, I don't, I don't want time to, to delay. We've, we've had this money now for a couple of months, and I'm just trying to, to move along and getting some of it in the street.
Yeah, maybe we can talk about it at our next meeting, just to give us time.
Yeah.
Yes.
So when the seventy-eight thousand that you have right, right here?
Yep.
If we're saying yay on that, what does that leave us with?
Well, we have, we got five hundred and thirty-three for the year, Counselor, so what, what our proposal earlier was, we'll take about a hundred right off the top of that. I think we substantiated the last time we discussed about fifty, just right at fifty-seven thousand in lost revenue for twenty-twenty-one, so projecting a little bit smaller amount in twenty-twenty-two, so the city would use a hundred thousand for, for lost revenue. We talked about, about three hundred thousand going towards this, this program, and I think we had about a hundred and thirty or forty earmarked towards the individual program. So again, I suspect this will go up. I'm, I'm sure that, again, a lot of these folks in yellow are going to respond. They'll be able to get us the information. It's not information that will be difficult to get us to stuff they didn't have, so I think that will go up. There'll be more money given out then. And I suspect some of these folks in red, once we, once we make another attempt to get ahold of them, we'll get, so I think we'll continue to get applications in. I think what I tried to focus on, you'll see here, the, the kind of logic was instead of trying to tailor this to each and every request, I tried to establish an idea here of if it's a, a small business. I tried to establish an idea here of if it's a small business, around 5,000. If it's something that was larger community impacting, impacting a greater population, we kicked it up to 10,000. Something like the Garden Club asked for 4,000. That's fairly standard that they asked for us. The snack pack program asked specifically for 4,000, impacts a lot of children. And then by way of businesses, what we did was I took first those entities that have received no money from any other federal or state source and we matched what we thought was an applicable grant size to the request. And then we went back down the list to those that had received some funding and kind of assessed based on the amount they got, a higher or lower grant amount. The goal here wasn't necessarily to take the applicants and the number of money and divide it up. It was try to bring some level of logic. This really, for a small city, this should be a micro grant program. We did get some requests that were as high as 50, 60, 100,000. Those are, those are pretty steep for us in a budget allotment of only 500,000. So that was where the dollar amounts came from. I think you'll see here how we make the splits. People that got 40, 50,000, for instance, in PPP money. Again, we still wanted to be able to reach out and apply them, you know, some sort of small funding from the city. So that was our, that was our logic in moving forward with that.
And are the businesses based on the number of employees that they have, not counting the owners?
No, some of it, some of it was that, Counselor. We looked, if you look at most of the applications we got, they are, they're truly small businesses, one to three or four employees. What we tried to look at was the scope necessarily. If you see the big amounts that we recommended here were places like the Boys and Girls Club, you know, things that are impacting community-wide, you know, significant events or ability to bring revenue generation to the city versus people working with them, you know, a small, a smaller business with a smaller population center.
I think the veterans of foreign war, I see they're down for like five grand. I think they should be in the same column as the 10, only because it's the only veterans club we still have left. And if I look to the left of the column, you know, one person, one group that's getting $10,000, has already gotten 125 from somewhere else. And they didn't get anything from anyone else. So I don't know. I just, I think they have a pretty big impact on the city and they do a lot of, a lot of things for the community. So I think they're getting a little short chain here.
Exactly, right.
No, I just, you know, I mean, honestly, I think that, you know, they struggle.
What? What's the SVOG grant for the Augsburg Command Performance? It's 105K. You know what that stands for? EIDL? Pardon?
It's a, when a disaster is declared, it's a loan program. The SBA has authority to lend. So the, and I don't, I don't remember on the Command Performance. We looked it up. I can't remember what it was called. It was a, it was a civic award. It was a state level grant. I believe it was in the paper, but we'll bring the information back, Counselor. There it is. Yep.
And these are all the numbers?
Shredder vendors, operators, venues.
Congratulations on that.
Again, there was a lot of ways, a lot of different methodologies to look at this. This gives us a starting point. I do think, for one thing, I think was sort of universal from a lot of these small businesses, it's, most of these businesses need the money sooner rather than later. So again, I'm doing my best to bring it to you to get there.
Just one other quick question here. Salon 1012, Victoria's Touch of Color is not, no suggested appropriation there with the other two. I'm assuming those are chairs that they're leasing maybe out of the salon?
Right.
Right.
Right. And so the yellow ones, Counselor, just again, folks that we've got, we just need to get some more information. I suspect all those that are on that sheet in the yellow will have a dollar recommendation and are just missing some part of the documentation we were looking for.
They're not excluded, are they?
No, no. We excluded nobody at this point. Again, the folks in red are just, we did not get the formal, you know, one-page application back yet. Hoping that will occur. Happy to, and if anybody's got any ideas, again, please, if you could communicate prior to the next meeting so I can get this further refined. Will, as we get additional folks qualified on this, we'll send that list around. I would like by the next meeting to be able to start, get some authorization and move some of the...
I'd like to earmark some more for the Boys Club, if we could, Boys and Girls Club. I know that 10,000 looks like our landmark, but they do so much.
Absolutely.
For kids, so just my two cents.
Absolutely.
So do you want us to just go through this and then send you changes we would like to see? And then we'll go back?
I think, and I'll corral them all and just bring them back to the next meeting. The kind of here was what I got from the group and we'll present that. And by then, again, I may have some more. I'm, as we looked at the number of applicants, not necessarily, again, if you look at, there's some pretty high amounts in here. We really looked at, again, if we took them all and we were to give out an even amount, et cetera, et cetera. And so I believe anyway we slice it, unless a bunch more coming, we've got money here to take care of a lot of things.
Are Catholic Charities and the Diocese one? Are they separate entities? They're separate, right?
Yeah.
So Catholic Charities for the Diocese, all right. Okay. I just want to clarify.
The 2021 budget update is brief. We did receive a significant change to our budget once we get the contract and it's approved with the FRB money. So in what we've been doing in kind of conjunction with the budget is forecasting, recognizing that we've spent the first 10 months of the money. Everything, you know, I always say personal services are our biggest part of the money. They're running as we would expect. So as of right now, what we're trying to do is to put a presentation together for you, which forecasts through the end of December and identifies places where we will continue to spend money, where we won't spend money, and then put together for you any budget modifications that would be needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any old business? Does anyone have any new business?
Oh, sorry. I don't know if it's new business or I'm sure, but I know we're due for our ISO rating. Where are we at with expecting that? And could you kind of go over exactly what they're looking for and how their ISO rating is impacted by the decrease in fire and police, please?
Sure. We are, we are due, the gentleman's either coming this week or next week. I can't, I can't remember which day he's coming. In short, Counselor, the staffing level of the Fire Department has almost nothing to do with the ISO rating.
ISO goes through like our...
Based on, ISO ultimately looks at our equipment, looks at our ability to generate water and looks at our ability to maintain our major pieces of apparatus, et cetera. It largely is a, it's a balancing risk-based tool, but it, but it doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration staffing. Looks at response distances, what our capability is, et cetera. So ISO is, ISO is relevant, but it's not as relevant as it was, once was. Most of the large insurance companies, for instance, State Farm, don't rely on ISO anymore. They use their own, excuse me, their own regional loss data to make their risk decisions. So we still fully participate and expect within probably about three days from when the gentleman's here, we'll have our report. I don't, I don't see any change in our ISO rating up or down from this visit. Yeah, I don't speculate anything, anything different up or down.
Well, give me a ballpark as to what it would take to alter. So State Farm Allstate, for example, what it would take for them to actually alter their ISO rating? I mean, what kind of loss, what kind of...
Well, so remember, ISO is an independent risk organization, but ultimately, for anyone's data. Yeah.
I'm just referring to your comment regarding, yeah. Well, with a bigger insurance company, suggest.
Yeah, claims. So they look at the, they look at the regional loss data for geographic areas. So a significant increase in monetary claims would adjust their...
Would increase the ISO.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess what would it, I don't know. I guess for a size of this municipality, what would constitute an adjustment with a large carrier? Kind of loss?
I don't, I don't have any real good knowledge of that, Counselor. I can certainly, certainly try to find out.
Well, they're going to do it on an average anyways, through municipality. You just said that, so.
So, so loss, I mean, it's going to be based on the historic loss data?
So would our ISO...
Law averages.
Would our ISO be better in Augsburg compared to every other community in St. Lawrence County that does not have a full-time fire department?
Not necessarily.
You would think it would be.
I think Musina and Augsburg are the same.
Yeah, not...
Musina isn't paid. Musina is not a paid fire department.
37, but they're rating. It's only a very good rating if you invest the exact kind of money in the fire department with new equipment and everything and you're rated no better than it is. Yeah. So staffing levels have no impact on the ISO rating?
Nor do they have any, any direct implication in the other way the insurance is gauged, gauged risk loss. Now, an indirect correlation you can draw though. For instance, a paid fire department is likely going to be able to respond quicker. So you would expect losses in those areas to be less. I mean, so you can, you'll see the indirect correlation there for sure. There's lots of things, excuse me, let's say lots of factors now that will impact that. And certainly the advent of new building codes, fire spread, ratings of materials increasing, better fire prevention efforts, you know, greater public awareness, you know, et cetera. There's lots of things that go into it. So I would say the, so obviously having the paid firefighters or career firefighters, whatever we call it, you know, people available immediately in the station reduces the likelihood of fire spread because our response time is obviously quicker. So therefore, we would expect less, less loss.
Any items for discussion?
Just would like to firm up with council, if I could, where we go with the budget from here. We've, excuse me, we've completed all the major items, I think, for you all to be able to analyze, make your recommendations for changes. Our anticipation now is to be able to vote on the final budget at the next city council meeting. So we could have some communication about how you all would like, if there's anything, what you need from the staff, additional information, how we intend to go forward with modifications to the budget. I'd like to be able to handle this in somewhat of a uniform manner. I'm sure there'll be changes that you're all, you know, in agreement with. So let's take care of those rather quickly, some that we can, you can debate and be done with. And then those that there may not be concurrence on, that may have to individually go to vote. But we could iron down a process over the next couple of days of how you all want to put all that down.
I already mentioned that I wouldn't, I don't support the water rate increase during both the water and sewer fund. This year, that's where I stand. And then on Police Department, I, you know, I'd support two more officers filling two vacant positions. If we can come up with the money, I think we can. Those are the only changes that I have.
So are you discussing PD to 20 and not the 21? Or PD to 21?
PD to 20.
To 20?
I view it as a compromise. I have concerns myself and I want to make sure that they have enough people. But, you know, we all have so much money. I think the 21 is a compromise. I know, I think to be effective, they need 24. And I think 21 is still going to put a significant amount of stress. We heard the report tonight from Matt Irwin about our workloads are at least a third more than most of the other agencies around us. We're getting paid less than, comparing us to Musina. I know Musina is going to put more on. They're probably looking at 21, 22 on their next budget. So I think 21 minimum myself. If we can find the money in there somewhere, make some changes. I want to support 21 at least.
No, I'm, I'm not a crime fighter by any means. And I'm going based off of...
I saw you on Halloween. All right.
I know. Full disclosure, I was a crime fighter.
Yes.
But in any official capacity, I would take Chief Kern's recommendation. I really would like to see it at 21 myself. Just based on the data and the email we received the other day with the types of crime. Some of that crime is pretty alarming to notice that that's going on in the same community that you're raising your families and you're going to bed in. And, you know, a community we didn't used to have to lock our doors. And now there's a lot of scary things going on. I think looking out for our community, I think 21, based on the chief's pretty much plea to us, is, you know, what we could do just to support them, where they can continue to support our families and support our community, myself.
It was my number one priority.
And this brings us to citizens' participation. At this time, anyone attending remotely would like to address council. Please use the raise hand feature. You'll have two minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
We have a need for executive session tonight. Both pending or current litigation from which no action. We'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll favor it.